Welcome to the August 11, 2025 study session of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise? You're already risen for the pledge of allegiance led by the Honorable Carrie Buzinski.
Hi, Greenhills. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So this meeting sets the agenda for the 2023rd regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, August 25th, where tonight's item will be officially voted on. We are missing our colleague, Rob Donavick, and we will see him back on the 25th. I'm going to jump right into audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Name, address. You have three minutes.
Steve King, Coventry Gardens. All right.
It's too quiet in here.
Too quiet, isn't it? Shh. Dear neighbor, in the recent vote on the city millage, our community spoke loudly, but not with one voice. About 9,000 of you believed a yes vote was the right path forward, and I respect that. You voted with Livonia's best interests at heart, just as those who voted no did. I know many of you were motivated by a desire to protect city services, invest in our future, and keep Livonia strong. Those are goals I share. Where we differed was in how to achieve them and in the information we were given to make that choice. The millage has been decided, but the conversation about Livonia's future is just beginning. I'm running for city council to make sure we have a government that is transparent, fiscally responsible, and accountable to all residents regardless of how they voted. We may not have agreed on this issue, but I believe we can agree on this. Our city works best when leaders are honest with the numbers, open with the facts, and respectful of alternative perspectives. That's the kind of leadership I promise to bring to City Hall. I invite you to join me not as a yes voter or no voter, but as neighbors who care deeply about Livonia. Together, we can build a future that works for everyone. With the remainder of my time, just want to touch on a couple of stuff. I'm just chomping at the bit to respond to a lot of stuff you say. Okay, we have problems, yes, but before you fix the problem, you have to be honest about what the problem is. And I hope you come to my next teaching because I'll tell you what's actually going on with the library, the library elevator. All right. And as far as opinions, yeah, there's a lot of opinions out there. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but not their own set of facts. Couple people came before council today. There are seven cities in Wayne County. They all have a fully functioning financial department, so we should too. I just wanted to push back a little bit about turnout. Yes, it was a very large turnout for a primary. There are 74,000 registered voters. Only 27,000 bothered to get off the couch. I'm sorry, I think that's shameful. I really do. And of the 18,000 people that voted no, about 8,000 of them didn't even bother to fill in a bubble for council. They came and voted no and went home. So, yes, it was a record turnout in that respect, but we have to do better as citizens and in November. You've got to show up. You've got to do your research, and you've got to show up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, I am going to jump right over to council announcements. Counsel? All right. Oh, Councilwoman Buzinski.
Yes, I just, you know, it was mentioned in passing, but it is an incredible event here in our community, so I did want to just shout out the Rotary's Touch a Truck event that is at Greenmead on Saturday, August 23rd. It is one of the largest touch a truck events around. It is always incredibly well done, a lot of fun for families. I believe there's going to be a skydiver this time. That's what I heard when I was going to the big picnic, the Churchill Interact Club. You're a Rotarian, Council President, do you?
I was going to say, it wasn't me. I'm not the skydiver, at least that's not what I heard.
Well, anyways, it'll be a great time. Helicopters, first responders, just lots of trucks. So if you have families or you just want to get out and enjoy our community, consider checking it out on Saturday, August 23rd.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I was notified that there's going to be a flea market. Not the real fleas, but you know what flea market is? At the Wilson Barn, a lot of different things, vintage jewelry, clothing, art collectibles, toys, sweets, treats, et cetera, food trucks, free admission for families. And that's over at the Wilson Barn, August 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Does anybody know where the Wilson Barn is? Yes, West Chicago and Middlebelt. So everybody go on out. These are pretty popular. I know the Greenmead one is. So let's go to that end of town, if you will, and let's support the Wilson Barn on the 17th of August. Thank you.
I love it. Anything else from council? All right. I'm going to give one shout out. All right. And I think this is like everybody's favorite person, but John Yu, Pro Sports Zone at Laurel Park Mall, he basically has, what, like 65% of that mall space at this point, other than Vonmar? That guy, I remember when the pandemic was happening, and he literally was on the news delivering, you know, people would buy things, and he would walk it out to the parking lot with a mask on. Anytime you ask him for a charitable donation, he does it. So we recently, Harper and I, sold cards, sports cards, and we did okay, but Johnny put the event on, and just awesome event that I think that was the most packed that Laurel Park has been in some time. So, you know, if you're looking for sports stuff, I'm doing a selfless plug for John. He's a great guy. Go see John. He's a local dude and does great for the things for the community. With that, I am going to jump right into the study agenda with item one is a block party request. Comes to us from Karen Worden to be held Saturday, August 30th, 2025, from 3:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. on Flamingo between St. Martin's and Brenton Streets with a rain delay of Sunday, August 31st, 2025. Hey, how are you?
Good evening. Karen Worden, 1-9651 Flamingo Boulevard.
Yes. So this is not your first one. You were...
This is not our first rodeo.
Yeah, I was about to say. I never seen it.
This is our 18th annual.
So great. So what do we got going? Anything, just some stuff?
Barbecue games, no skydiving.
All right. You can work for it.
Live music, karaoke, and just neighbors coming together.
Awesome.
In community.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving and consent.
We have an approving on consent, which means, well, council, are we good with that?
Sure.
Audience, we good with that? Which means you don't really have to come back and see us. Have a great time. We'll see you next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item two is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. Comes to us from Nick Cornell, the general manager of Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC, to host the Wildwood Sour Fest event Saturday, August 30th, from 3:00 p.m. till 11:00 with live music on the property at 36685 Plymouth Road. Is this four or five?
This will be number five.
Wow. Give the pitch to it. It's...
All right. So we're going to have, this is our Sour Fest, so all our best sour beers probably make up a third of our sales normally. We're pretty well known for them. We're doing 15 and pouring outside with live bands. Wildwood itself is, long winded, Wildwood itself is barrel aged with lots of funky microbes and bacteria and yeast right from the air.
Do you got Snazberry again?
I'll make it.
Fair enough. Listen, amazing. I'll tell you what, if you haven't been, but yes, do you want to, is that about it? Same stuff, right?
Yeah, that's about it. It's just right in our, front of our building. We block everything off and do it out front. Just fun outdoor event.
Sounds good. What do you got?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer an approving, but I did want to ask Mr. Cornell something. That used to be a Howard Johnson's years ago. I don't mean to date myself, but you guys have really brought that area up. I really appreciate that on Plymouth Road.
Thank you.
You've done a great job and hear nothing but good things about your business, so much success to you again this year.
Well, thank you.
Did everything go good with the accident? The guy, didn't you, I seen that on, it hit Facebook, not to jump into it.
Yeah, that's a fun topic. Yeah, so...
Someone decided to miss the curve.
What, the wall was hit by a Jeep?
Yes.
I'm guessing around 2:00 in the morning. I don't remember what time, but our brewers came in that day, ready to brew at about 5:00 in the morning.
Had an accessory vehicle inside the building?
Well, it was flipped over on the other side of the building. They didn't see it because of the way, you know, coming in from the opposite direction, get inside, and then they hear water flooding the basement.
Oh, no.
And then they walked in the brewery and boom, there's a big hole in the wall. So that was fine. We just finished the repairs on the wall.
Okay, good.
There's a few other things that still need fixed.
Cool. Good, good. No, that's, when I seen this on the agenda, I was like, I'm glad that this is going so...
And there's a few new boulders.
Yes, are you good with the consent?
That's fine.
In the parking lot.
All right. So we have a consent. Counsel, do we have anything else? Audience? All right. So you've been approving on consent. If you're looking for a good time, get to this event. It's a fun time.
Yes, August 30th.
Cool, man. Well, it's good to see you. All right. Moving on. Item three is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Jacob Irma... I'm going to go.
Irmitay.
Irmitay. Thank you so much.
No worries.
To host a concert event Saturday, September 27th, 2025, from 3:00 to 10:00 with live music and DJs on the property located at 9820 Levan Road. So, yeah, tell us about.
Sure, yeah. I held this in 2023, came here, got the sound ordinance waived. It was very successful. We had several different acts, good turnout. It was just live music, bands are playing for like 30 minutes, changeover another 30 minutes. It's just a good time to see like my friends and my friends' music all in the same space. And if you're curious about like it being a front yard, where the house is, there's like a very large front yard. It like borders Heinz Park. So a lot of the sound, I mean, it does go into the neighborhood. And last year, I'll do this again, but last year I let the neighbors surrounding know. I just kind of went up to them and said, hey, you know, we're doing this concert thing, just so you know, you know, just to make sure that like they were cool with it. And, yeah, it's really just a celebration of my friends and my friends' music.
I like it. Councilwoman Buzinski.
Yeah, I'm so disappointed that our arts commissioner, Joe Gilligan, isn't here. He's looking for bands for, he wants to do a battle of a band as revisioning the Music of the Heart concerts that we have Thursday night here at City Hall. So if you have any interest in helping with that, let us know. And in the meantime, I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's no objections.
And he's welcome to come if you'd like.
Awesome. We'll be approving on consent. Anything from the audience? All right. That means you don't have to come and hang out with us next time.
Amazing.
Matter's all but assured, but let's see you next year for the third event, right?
Yeah.
All right, my friend. Have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item four is a request to approve and recognize the Clarenceville High School Homecoming Parade Parade Route, the closing of certain streets, and the request to designate and authorize Senior Police Officer Michael Arcalian to the sign, wait, to sign the Wayne County Road Commission permit on behalf of the city to close a portion of Middlebelt with the city to assume liability for any damage claims which may arise in a result of road closure. Comes to us from Kevin Murphy, Athletic Director, to be held on Friday, September 26th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, go ahead, and you can tell us a little bit about it first.
So I'm Megan Fitzgerald. I'm the one that keeps coming back year after year. I have been running this for a couple of years now. It's the same old, same old. I have to give you a shout out. I got so, so much positive feedback for you guys joining us last year.
We're coming.
I was going to say, so like, expect my email again once, you know, we get the official, official...
I even think that Judge Jolly and I rode back in the back of a pickup truck down in Middlebelt, so that was cool.
Was that called shotgun?
Listen.
It's a great time. I mean, it's small but mighty, just like our school, our district. So we have all of the kids ranging from elementary up through high school, the different programs. It's always a good time, same old, same old. A little bit earlier this year, we had our, originally the game was going to fall on a day we had no school, and we were like, well, how are we going to get the kids pumped if there's no school for pep rallies? But I'm looking forward to another, another awesome event with you guys hopefully also out there with us.
There you go.
So, Mr. President, actually, the two of us had a good time marching in the parade last year, right in front of their school board. We had the band in front of us.
Yes.
Yes, we followed the band. We had our own band with Judge Jolly, but it was a lot of fun. And, yeah, the Board of Ed gave us a ride back in the pickup truck. You're right.
I had a blast. It was awesome.
I was in there like, how do we get back to our cars? So it was a lot of fun. Probably not safe, but fun.
It's fine.
It's all good. But I'll offer an approving on consent. I think this is a no brainer.
And count us in. Honestly, the banner's ready to go.
Beautiful, okay.
We're bringing the party. We're going to, and I honestly will probably add some people.
I see, the more the merrier. I'm like, if we can even get more faces.
I'm telling you, I loved it.
The community loved it, seriously, so please.
Breaking down the silos.
Yes.
So, yes, we will definitely be there. We have an approving on consent. Anything from the audience? All right. We will see you there. Send us an email.
Yes, I got you. Don't worry.
My short term memory loss, but yes, we would love to be there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Waiver petition from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-06-02-13 submitted by 3CS Schoolcraft LLC requesting waiver use approval to operate an indoor recreational facility at 37461 Schoolcraft Road located at the southwest corner of Schoolcraft and Newburgh Roads. Yes, it's your time, yes.
Finally, right? Sorry about that.
Well, Mark, do you want to just introduce it a little bit or is it just brief?
This was indicated a waiver petition involving the recreational use. The reason we treat these as waiver petitions is because of the sometimes heavy traffic that's involved on industrial properties. We want to make sure that the use is compatible with that area. In this particular case at the southwest corner of Schoolcraft and Newburgh, this building functions almost very similar to a retail strip center. It has two tenants and employment service agency as well as a rehab, medical rehab facility. The martial arts school, Impact Mentoring, will be occupied about 1,900 square feet. More than enough parking on the site. Planning Commission has reviewed and approved this and is recommending your approval.
Sounds good. Well, we do have the petitioner here. Counsel, do I have direction? Yes.
Mr. President, I just have a couple of questions first.
Go for it.
That's okay. I know parking during planning was a concern. There were some concerns about parking. Can you overflow to the adjacent properties in the evenings? That'd probably be the one.
Yes, ma'am. So mostly your business hours are after those particular business hours for those functioning businesses, and so there's no conflict there.
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to make sure. And our colleague, Mr. Donavick, isn't here tonight, but I know that he would want to know about your dumpster enclosure, and that's kind of a nod to Mr. Donavick tonight. So you have a dumpster enclosure taking care of all this?
Yes, we do. We have a dumpster enclosure in the back towards the right, so, yeah.
He'll be thrilled to hear about this. No, this looks like a great, great business. I love jiu-jitsu. I think this is a great thing that you're bringing to our community, and I'll be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any comments, concerns, questions from council? Anything from the audience? Well, right now, you're all but assured to be approved. Thanks for hanging out with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
And, yeah, you don't have to see us back and get the paperwork and open up.
Perfect. Do I need to go to the second meeting, the Sunday meeting?
Right now, it's going to be on the consent, so it's all but assured. If you want to come and hang out for, check out local government and your board.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate everything.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay to leave?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
All right. Moving on to item six is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from a sole source provider. Comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation in reference to irrigation system upgrades at Fox Creek, Whispering Willows, and Idrawala Golf Courses from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening. Douglas Ware representing Parks and Rec and the City of Livonia Golf Courses. We're requesting to waive the sealed bid process for some upgrades to our irrigation systems at all three golf courses for a total amount of $141,334,019. If you have any questions, be free.
Councilwoman Toy, and then, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer an approving, and I'd like to thank you for keeping our golf courses in great shape and be sure to say hi to your mom.
I will do that for you.
His mother was our senior director for years.
Oh, that's great.
Game wear.
Okay, cool. Is that cool to be on consent?
Yeah.
If it's okay to everybody else?
There's a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a really quick question. I noticed there's a real disparity between the three courses. Is that just size or...
So Idrawala only needs our software and our computer and software upgrades. We already have upgraded their satellite boxes out there. Fox needs, I think, six boxes, and Whispering Willows needs 10.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, the courses look great this year. I've played all three, and thank you for what you do out there.
I got to say, when we were recently in the, was it the LPOA golf outing? The little unmanned gra, the lawnmowers.
Yep, Husqvarna, yeah, those are cool.
It's cool to see.
Yeah, they're fun.
In action, so kudos to you. But, yes, right now you're on consent. Anything from the audience? Seeing, oh, we do have a question from the audience. If you'd like to step away.
Denise Micah, Lancashire. What's the rationale behind waiving the sealed bid process and going sole source?
Usually it would be either a cooperative purchasing agreement or a means that it would be deficient not to select a bid. I have to look at...
Is it in the package?
I think it's in the package, yes. If you have the answer, I don't want to put you on the spot.
If you don't have the answer.
Cool.
Okay, yeah.
Site one is our supplier for our rainbird supplies. They are the authorized dealer for the state of Michigan, so they're the only place we're allowed to buy them.
So sole source.
Sole source, yep.
Okay, that was all.
No worries.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Seeing no more audience communication, we're going to move on to item seven is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure from the, this comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the lease and emergency repair of a leased Vector truck from budgeted funds. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Counsel. Don Roraf, DPW. As you mentioned, we're here before you tonight to pay for an emergency repair on a rented Vector that was damaged during our use in excavating for exploratory for lead services. So I can expand on that if you'd want to, but I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We damaged a leased vehicle. They repaired it, so it's the repair amount, and it's also the two months of the lease. So we are looking for council to approve the emergency repair of the leased Vector in the amount of $50,601.97, and also approve the payment for the invoice of the two month lease for that in the amount of $28,000.
I got counsel, I got Vice President.
I'm sorry, supporter. Oh, no, we're not in that category.
Do you want that motion on the table, just to have it?
Vice President, don't care about it. Thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Roraf.
Good evening.
Excuse my ignorance, I don't know what a Vector truck is.
That's awesome. It's cool.
Okay.
Yeah, explain.
So...
Hang on, I want to see, hang on, let me...
Yeah.
No problem. I was going to say it's like our biggest truck comparing it to the size of like a fire engine, but it would be the truck that you see on the road that has the huge tank on the back. It has the tube coming out of the front. It's a multi-use vehicle that cleans out sewers, jet sewers, also does hydroexcavations, all of those type of things.
As soon as you said tank on the back, I knew which one you were talking about. Okay. I had one other quick question. So I know this was damaged. There's like basically an incident, accident with it. Insurance, not picking up any of this or no?
Obviously, we wanted to get this repaired as quick as possible. We're, obviously, when we're leasing it, we're on the clock, so we just wanted to make sure that that got taken care of. That's why we're here before you tonight. We are processing that through MMRMA.
Perfect.
I do not have an answer back on that yet, but...
So, but, yeah, we're in that process. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
I mean, Ms. Toy, do you want the?
No, go, ready.
Okay, I'll be happy to put this on approving on the, on consent. That's fine.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Audience? All right.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item eight is a request to authorize payment to Dan's Excavating Incorporated and AAA Underground and Grading. Comes to us from the Engineering Division for the water main replacement under I-96 west of Hicks Road from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear, how are you?
Just great. Thank you for having me.
Anytime, man. Anytime you want to be here, dude.
I'm sure. So this request is coming basically from Mr. Roraf. Throw him under the bus. We had a leaking water main underneath I-96 that we needed to get repaired, but it looked, we couldn't determine where the leak was, so it was going to more or less have to shut down freeway, dig up all the lanes to figure it out. down freeway, dig up all the lanes to figure it out. Since it was a redundant feed to the south end of the town, we turned it off, keeping it active but turned off in case we needed an emergency until the freeway construction was going. Unfortunately, when we got the final plans for the freeway, they decided they were going to lower it and put in some storm sewer, which was going to go right through the water main, so we had to do a complete redesign and replace the entire pipe from side to side. We went out to some of our contractors that were already under contract with other water main projects, seeing if they would hold their prices for more or less an emergency repair on this. We got numbers back, and then we got more news from M.D. that Dan's Excavating was moving up the timetable on it, and we were unable to go out for bids to meet the criteria to get it replaced before they did the work. We actually talked to Dan's Excavating and had them give us a number because it would be much easier for them to do it all in one piece than to try and have them do the section from wall to wall on the freeway and have us connect up the other sides with different contractors. Their number actually came in lower than the ones that we had from our contractors. So we decided to move forward with having them do that as more or less an emergency repair while they had the freeway opened up. After all was said and done, their bid items and final work amount came to $182,130,73. And then there was also a small amount of restoration that we had AAA Underground and Grading complete for us in front of Laurel Manor because during the water main work, a lot of the sprinkler system in the right-of-way was torn up. Dan's is not really good with landscaping. They're more a freeway contractor.
Exactly.
And then AAA Underground was already on-site at Laurel Manor fixing other portions of their sprinkler system and things, so we just had them complete that portion as well to save time and actually money.
They were already staged.
Yes, so we're looking for an additional $11,000 to pay AAA Underground and Grading to complete this project.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent. All that's.
We have an approving on consent. Any questions or concerns from council? Audience?
Is it fixed?
Yes.
It's fixed. Well, you might, you can come and hang out with us again on the, you might be there.
And on the plus.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to item nine is a request to extend contract with Bid Gary Contractors. Comes to us from the Engineering Division to include Pickford and Clarita Avenues in the 2024 Westfield Avenue and Harrison Road Water Main Replacement Project from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear.
Yes, so this one, Pickford Avenue from Inster Road over to Deering, and then another block up of Clarita Avenue, we have a water main that keeps breaking on us. We want to do the road paving project and finish off and get that repaired, but we don't want to do that until after we get the water main finished. So we went out for our existing contractor, Bid Gary Contracting, was finishing up a water main replacement project that we had bid two years prior in '23. They agreed to hold their unit prices on it, so we decided to try to award them an extension on their contract to finish this portion so that we can also get this finished and get the road paved this year. So with using their bid item numbers, the number came back at $568,900.
Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Questions, concerns? Anything from the audience? All right, moving on to the last item. Thank you, Mr. Lear. Number 10 is a request to approve cable franchise agreement between the City of Livonia and DirecTV LLC. Comes to us from the Department of Law for a period of 10 years from the date issued. Mr. Fisher.
Is there anybody here?
There's a couple.
So this is essentially a perfunctory agreement that we are required to do for franchising fees with the various cable companies that operate in Livonia. DirecTV has actually taken over this agreement from AT&amp;T, so they've offered us the same terms that they've always offered us, a 5% franchise fee and a 1.58% peg fee to support Channel 8. And the way the state law is constructed now, if we don't approve it, it will be approved within 30 days anyway.
Okay. Council, Councilwoman Toy.
Well, I'm going to be a little crabby on this one. Because, I don't know, Mr. Carter, we, is there anybody that has this new thing where you just talk into it? I mean, that's infinity, I think. Plymouth's got it, this one's got it. You can rewind, you can playback, you know. What's it called?
No, I'm sorry, I was going to have something funny. I was going to bring control.
But I mean, another 10 years, I mean, some of this equipment is so outdated compared to what's going on with other communities. I'm embarrassed when people come to my house, they look at this big cable thing, and they go, what the heck? You guys are in the year of whatever. I'm not tech savvy by any means, but I'm just saying, did we question DirecTV? I mean, do they have those cool things or no?
They do.
They do? Thank you, thank you. You make my heart a whole lot better.
Sorry, I was off the chart.
Okay, thank you, Carter. Vice President just answered that for me. Thank you, Vice President.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I'll ask for an approving now with confidence.
Here we go.
Consent?
Consent.
All right, so we have an approving on consent, council, is that okay? Audience?
I just had.
We good with that? All right, so with that, that concludes our study agenda. Councilman Morgan, take us home.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I think we could safely show.
I have something.
Oh, wait, 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 before we do it, Linda does, Councilwoman Shield does have something. The floor is yours.
I just wanted to ask, our clerk sent us an email with some information regarding what happened in Election Day. I'm wondering if she could maybe answer a couple of questions and put that on the next meeting's agenda so that it can be a receive and file so that people can see that, the public can see that information.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the voter turnout stuff?
Yeah, the stuff that you sent us by email. And that way, it's part of a record that council received it, and it's there for the public to view also.
Sure, I can put that on the next agenda.
For a receive and file is perfectly fine.
Perfect.
Okay.
And then before, you did remind me that I did forget to go to the audience for items that are not currently on the agenda. Seeing none?
Now we go.
Motion, there we go.
Motion to adjourn.
I think we could safely show everybody.
It was a lot of fun. It's time to go home now and.